Welcome to Athens City Council. This evening, we will be meeting in council committees. The meeting will be called to order by the city council president, who will then pass discussion over to a respective committee. The chair of the committee will introduce the discussion topics and provide an overview of the issues at hand. If needed, members of the administration will offer brief statements to provide further context. We will then welcome input from the community. Any citizens who wish to speak will be asked to state their name and address, both verbally and on the sign and sheet located at the podium. Individuals will be given one opportunity to share their thoughts, and the committee chair will have the authority to limit each speaker to three minutes. Once all citizens have had the opportunity to speak within the 15-minute time period allotted for total public participation on each topic, the public comment portion will be closed. Council committee members will then continue their deliberations. There may be additional questions directed to the administration during this time. When the discussion on the topic concludes, the chair will indicate whether legislation will be introduced at the next regular session of council and move on to the next item on the agenda or adjourn the committee if their work is complete. The next committee chair will then call their committee to order, proceeding in the same manner as before. Once all committees have adjourned, city council will conclude for the evening.
Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 22, 2025, at 7:02 PM. And we have a series of committee meetings this evening, beginning with the Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Swank, who is joined by Member Thomas, Member Spionas, and Member Wood.
All right. Thank you, President Crowell. For those of you who looked at the agenda, you can see that the Planning and Development Committee takes up seven tenths of tonight's agenda. So we'll try to move through this in an orderly and rapid fashion, but certainly entertaining as many questions and comments as are necessary this evening. First item on the Planning and Development Committee agenda is a pre-annexation agreement, Athens County Children's Services. Many people think that that institution is a part of the city of Athens, but actually, it's currently on county property. And this proposed ordinance would start the process of annexing that property into the city of Athens. This evening, we have the executive director of the Athens County Children's Services, Otis Crocker, with us this evening. Sir, the podium is yours. Bring us up to speed, please.
Hello. It's good to see everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Just to share a little bit, Athens County Children's Services for some time has been wanting to do a building project. We just recently, well, we started on this project last year, and construction is underway. And so we're really happy with everything that's happening. During our whole time of planning and trying to make sure we're moving forward the way we needed to, we started hearing discussion about, you know, how we're structured, the fact that you just mentioned we're on county property, we're not annexed in to the city. And so through those discussions, one thing that we knew about our building, which is about 28,800 square, 28,800 square feet, is one thing to have the sprinkler system we discussed was to have to do some work on Jacobs Road there to get the right-sized water supply. So through this whole discussion, it came up, you know, we were considering what it would take for us to do this. And through some dialogue with the mayor and also Andy Stone, we started talking about what's the feasibility of us becoming annexed in and at the same time being able to get those supplies from the city. Had a couple cursory conversations with the commissioners, and they said, I think we should consider doing that. And it made sense. All this time, we have not been under the city. And so I started having conversations with our staff that we may look to do this. And through a lot of back and forth, which I won't go into all of that, we ended up coming up with this pre-annexation document with Athens County and the city. And I went and presented this to the commissioners on the 16th, which they did approve us moving forward. I knew that I would have their blessing to do this. And so now, we're just coming to you and asking for approval to do this and move it forward. That's a real summary. There's a lot more pieces that happened in the discussion. So any questions or anything you want to know about?
Because our protocol is we go to the mayor first, then the public, and then the members of the committee. So Mayor Patterson.
You know, the only thing to add, you know, we have been in conversations for quite a while with Mr. Crocker. And this is a different type of annexation. You know, unlike the annexation that we're going to take up in the next piece of legislation, which is a Type II, it's Type I's. This is a political subdivision to political subdivision way of doing this. And one of the things that's important is that council will petition with the Board of Commissioners in November of 2026 to do the finalized annexation of this property. And again, that was a conversation that we had had with Mr. Crocker, as well as knowing that the time they're needing to get this thing up and going and to get the build out and whatnot. It made sense to us, but with that commitment that we've already received with it going before the commissioners and them agreeing to move forward with this is a great step forward as we look to having this annexed in the future.
Thank you. Members of the community, anyone have any questions or comments on this proposal before council this evening? Questions from member of the committees, members of the committee. Member Thomas, yes.
Just reading through it, I just had a few questions just on the overall impact as to how legally binding this would be, barring any or barring any changes in personnel between the city, the county, you know, I don't think Mr. Crocker, Crocker's going anywhere. But should be, there be changes, is this still a legally binding agreement? Or we have this changed at any point?
I guess when you ask that question, you're asking about the proposal in total or this pre-annexation?
I mean, I guess both, but the in total. You know, is there a chance that we could get to next August and county commissioners change their mind or anything?
I like to believe with having a signed document from them stating that this is what they intend to do. Again, I'm not going to get into the weeds on things, but I think that's the most positive sign that we have at this point moving forward. There is language inside the agreement that speaks to this not happening. But I want to state more affirmatively that this will happen moving forward in the future. So I'll just leave it at that.
In terms of change of personnel, there is one county commissioner seat up this fall. But it's my understanding that is an uncontested race. And then the next county commissioner election would be in 2027. So we'd be good all the way through that. And I'm sure you plan to be open well before 2027, don't you?
Absolutely. Moving October of 2026.
Okay.
And I will say, in conversations I've had with our board, of course, we report, I report to a board, in conversations with the board, they felt this was the right move as well, not just for our building project, but just the fact that we are in the city. We're right here. And their thoughts were that, yes, it costs staff more to, you know, taxes, but that we all should be contributing anyway. I don't see anyone really wanting to not do this going forward.
And to that end, I see this as a win-win, the increased tax revenue for the city, but also police and fire very much at your disposal because you would be in the city and the first round of responders would be the city of Athens Police Department and folks from the new fire station.
Sure.
But to that end, about how many people are employed at Children's Services out of that, will be out of that location when it's all said and done?
There's 100, 100 staff. Right now, we're about 92 staff, so we have some vacancies. Yeah. And I tell you, about six months ago or so, when I just did a cursory check to see what that would generate for the city as far as just knowing those individuals who would be paying, it was in the ballpark of 110,000 to 120,000 per year that that would generate for the city. So.
Yes, Mayor Patterson.
Man, that's, you know, that's wonderful. I think, more importantly, could you speak a little bit to those whom you serve? Give us an idea of the numbers of.
Yes, as far as. Oh, absolutely. We probably have about 130, 122, 123 children in care right now. We've gone as high as having 135 children, 137 children in care. And that's where we have custody of a child. But we're working with their families. We make sure they have everything they need to thrive as children. And that's up to the age of 18 and sometimes, depending on the situation, even to 19 or 21. But on top of that, that's just dealing with our direct services. But there's other things we provide where, you know, our school outreach program, where we have staff in all of the school districts. And in Athens, we have two school outreach workers. They're probably providing services for about 5,800. And so as far as actual touches of helping children, that's not definitely involved with Children's Services, but it's a preventative type of piece to keep them from being involved with Children's Services. So we have a lot of different aspects to our agency. Even with our sanitary project, we're having gifts for about 1,400 children, anywhere from 1,200 to 1,400 children. So when we think about what Children's Services does in the community that it serves, it depends on what piece you're looking at. But we definitely serve a good portion of the county.
Other questions, I guess, Solvay?
Yeah, as a former social work professor at Ohio University, I have high regard for all that you do, and I really respect the work that you do. And many of my students are working there, have worked there, my friends, et cetera. So I'm very excited about your future. And I've seen pictures of the, what your new building is going to look like, which looks very exciting. But I do have a question about there's still would be a lot more acreage that you have back there, small, narrow kind of space. So do you have any further thoughts about where you're, what you're going to do with that additional land?
At this time.
I couldn't help but ask.
Oh, no. I appreciate the question. Since I started at the agency in 2008, I've had all kinds of different ideas and things I would like to see. But of course, the new building is the priority. But of course, this is no news to any of you. I don't believe in our country, there's such an issue with placement cost and trying to find placement, inadequate placement for children that are in our care. I'm not saying what we want to do with that area, but when we consider things over in our past is, do we do a certain type of facility to be able to house children in a different way? Or to do respite care? There's an independent living program that we have. But right now, we're doing a lot of partnering with other counties. So I can't say for sure what that would look like, but that space is available. And it could, it could even be that the commissioners say, let's sell it. So I really don't know. We don't have any, any set plans for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for coming with this idea. Couple of quick questions, I think. You said this is so you can water the sprinkling, the sprinkler line, that sort of thing, better, better water and sewer services and that kind of thing. So just kind of pontificating to the mayor, are we then signing up to pay to do that sewer work as well? Is that part of the expectation that we'll do those? I imagine it's under street kind of things. Are we, is that part of the plan?
It is. I mean, we'll work on our side of the delivery system up to where then it becomes the county's and soon to be annexed in Children's Services responsibility for that line. But that's the plan, is, is to bid it out for what we need to do to provide the adequate water supply for this new facility.
And nearly impossible to project, but do we have any idea of how much that'll be? And do we have a plan for where that'll come from?
Not as expensive as one would think. I can't give you a firm number right now because it's something we're going to have to have the engineer give us a full scope of work. But it could be $50,000 or less, depending on the work that has to be done. But this is going to be, this will all be great for the neighborhood, for Fina, because it's going to basically create a new higher line loop within the neighborhood. So this is, this is both good for the city as it is good for this new facility.
If you're familiar with Jacobs, on the northwest corner of Jacobs is his inner house. Part of his inner house is in the city. Part of his inner house property is in the county. So we're not, and the mayor said $50,000 was probably surprised a lot of people how low that is, although 50,000 is a lot of money. But this is not a long run from where their existing lines to where the city property and the county property meet right there, basically the garage of the center house. So yeah, it's not a tremendous long. They will upgrade the neighborhood. Speaking of which, your construction folks have done a wonderful job traffic-wise, getting all that heavy equipment in and out of the neighborhood, keeping it very clean. So we certainly appreciate that.
Well, and I will say, I appreciate you saying that because that's when we had our conversations with them before they started, we really made sure we knew where you plant, which road you're going down. Please try and minimize, even as far as sweeping debris, making sure there's no dirt. And so they've been really great to work with. And they let us know if there's anything that's going to come up that would concern our neighbors. And so we're talking with the community as well. So I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you. Any other comments about this project? Yes.
Just real quick, is the primary Pepper Construction, is, who's?
Yeah, Pepper Construction, they won the bid. And so they're doing that. And they've got, of course, their subcontractors out there, but they're doing wonderful work for us.
Yeah. And we've had good experience with Pepper Construction as well.
Yep.
I just have a process question. Is this similar in length for an annexation as we would with private property? Or is this taking any longer because it's political subdivisions? It'll be the six readings and the 30 days?
That, that'll be separate, the lots split, all of that work. And that'll start through Title 41 and the Planning Commission. And there's work to be done in comparison to the annexation process. And they'll both get done in the appropriate amount of time, you know, that'll meet their timeline with getting this construction moving. I mean, it's already moving. The, I guess the main thing, again, just to echo this one more time, is that there will be council petitioning the commissioners for the final annexation.
November.
And that'll be later next year.
So if we start in October, November, by the end of the year-ish?
That's right.
Yeah, I think the language is on or before. So we can get moving on that probably right after we come back from recess next year, so we have it all in place. Any other comments? Mr. Crocker, our procedure from here is on the 6th of October, this will come up for first reading. I will check with the director, Stone, in advance of that to see if we need to take this through the three-reading process, which would be three meetings, or if this needs to be expedited with the suspension of the rules. But it will come up for first reading on the 6th of October, our first business meeting, our next business meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And as we move along with our project, of course, we'll be sending out some invites for anyone that wants to tour the facility. So I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Item number two, annexation. Ryan, if you could put my screen up, we'll have some idea of what we're talking about here. Okay. You're out on Columbus Road, and you're headed out of town. To your left, right down here, is Hugh White Honda. They want to expand their business on Columbus Road. And car dealerships tend to locate on busy roads. They want lots of traffic. And this is a very, very good spot for them. So what they're asking is to annex this triangle, it's about 1.75 acres, annex this triangle into the city of Athens. They've applied, dotted the i's, crossed the t's so far. And this would add, again, more space to the city, which we're responsible for, but would also allow this business to expand their business. The reason this is called Theater Drive, for those of you who haven't been, have only been in town for 25 or 30 years or less, is there used to be a drive-in theater out here. I think it was called the Valley Theater, wasn't Mary? 33 Theater, Valley must be out, yeah. And they always showed a double feature, but probably five times out of 10, you got to see three movies for the price of two. Because halfway through the second movie, because this is down the River Valley, the movie, The Fog, rolled in, and you couldn't even see the screen. Debbie's shaking her head. You probably got caught in that, too. But it's a pretty straightforward annexation request. Mayor Patterson.
I just want to add, if you want to go back in the time capsule, WXTQ, WITH was in that site, the Palmer family, running that radio station for decades. And obviously, it is now gone, but it is on that site.
Comments from the community?
Beth Cladfelter, South Shannon Avenue. I'm curious, are they going to park cars on that space? Or what is the intention of utilizing the proposed annexation spot?
To expand their car display area, their parking area. They're going to get more cars. I don't know if they're going to add an additional line of cars, but they need more space. And as you can see from this picture, those things are packed in there like sardines. So that's the plan.
Thank you.
Hi. Kent Nikes, 34, West Washington. As, you know, a lifelong resident of the area, I'm familiar with the historical value of that site. I worked at the radio station. The first radio contest I won when I was nine. It was a pre-production copy of Michael Jackson's Bad on cassette. Is there any way that we can ask them to put some sort of historical thing on the site? Just to reckon, almost like with the Berry Hotel site where the diner is, just to give homage and honor to, you know, the significant parts of our history here? You know, can we ask them as part of the thing, if we're giving them the land, to, you know, put up something that, you know, means something of significance? And then, you know, the people who are there shopping will recognize, you know, like, hey, cool stuff happened at this place and possibly cause them to, you know, spend more time in the community than just buying the car.
I guess, great suggestion. Other members of the community? Members of the Planning and Development Committee? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm curious why they need us to do this at all? What's the, you know, what does this, same question basically, what's it obligated us to do kind of thing? And yeah, why, why not just buy it and move on?
That is a question I can't answer.
I don't know that I understand the question. I mean, it, it's not in the city. They would like to have it annexed into the city so that it receives, you know, water service if they were to extend a water line to it or whatever for, I don't know, washing cars. I have no idea. But that's, that's what they would like to do, is to have that parcel annexed in for development.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been a minute, but I watched that Planning Commission meeting. I feel like maybe they wanted to put a building that was going to straddle the property line or something, and they felt like it would be, maybe it was already in two parcels. But yeah, there was something with their construction as to why they wanted to bring it all into the city and onto one lot.
Yeah, I believe that to be true. They are growing. And so they're expanding, much like Don Wood did when Don Wood built the new addition or dealership out near Menards, out in that direction, further out East State Street. So they're, apparently, Hugh White's growing.
And you look at the picture here, they're actually about grown their parking lot and are parking 20, 30 cars out on the grass. So it's, yeah, they need the space. Any other questions? All right. Item number three, recommendation from the City Planning Commission to amend ACC 23.04.03 to permit temporary housing shelters as a permitted accessory use for the gathering place at 157 Congress Street, and the legal opinion 25-02 offered by our city law director. We discussed this item in great detail two weeks ago at our last committee meeting. And one of the things that came out of that was the question of the law director to offer her legal opinion on this initiative in general, but specifically as it relates to the next item on our agenda this evening. All members of council have received this, her opinion, and it's been reported and reported in the press, in our local media. Mayor Patterson, anything you would like to add to that, sir?
Just to add, I did review what the law director's opinion was on this. And again, as she stated, it isn't inherently illegal. But it could be. But that. But that meaning that if someone else were to say, I would like to do this too, to put Conestoga temporary huts on my property, then we would have to revisit that if someone chose to do that. But I think the likelihood of that happening is slim to none. I think, I would have to say that, you know, for Ginger wanting to do this, and has been wanting to do this for quite some time, I don't know about council, but I haven't heard of anybody else saying, hey, me too, I would like to start putting Conestoga huts on my parcel, my property, and to provide the services that are required to do so, which is also inherent in this process that we're going through for one, five, and seven Congress Street.
As we did two weeks ago, I received an email today at four-thirty from Mr. Rob Delock at one-twenty-four Morris Avenue, and he asked me to read this into the record. So just as we did two weeks ago, I will read this into the record, and then we will go to additional public comment. Councilmember Swank, I'm writing in support of case number twenty-four dash oh four, allow a use not permitted in an R-three zone for seven North Congress Street, the gathering place, Conestoga Huts. To move forward is an ordinance to be considered by Athens City Council at the earliest opportunity. It is my belief that holding this case from moving forward now unnecessarily delays the implementation of much-needed temporary housing shelter at the gathering place, properties at seven North Congress Street, as with winter approaching times of the essence. Threat of potential legal challenge to the zoning change should not, in my opinion, hinder moving this case forward and bringing it before all of council for consideration. Should this topic be discussed, please read my statement above into the record at the City Council Planning and Development Committee meeting this evening, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you for your assistance with this. Additional comments from the community?
Megan Benjamin, fifteen Station Street. Hello, I want to introduce myself again. My name is Megan, and I'm a social work student at Ohio University, and I'm currently interning at the Gathering Place. During the last meeting, I spent time listening and learning about some of the community members' concerns about the Conestoga Hut project. A majority of concerns were for the safety of the students and the surrounding neighborhoods. This experience highlighted the importance of community-based advocacy and education. It became clear that more intentional efforts were needed to introduce the project and clarify its purpose to the neighbors of the Gathering Place. In response, my fellow interns and I initiated a door-to-door and peer-to-peer outreach effort. Our goal was to listen to residents' concerns and provide more accurate information about the project. I personally had many productive and meaningful conversations with community members. Through these conversations, I learned that many of the concerns were rooted in misunderstandings about the project itself and the community we serve. Additionally, I learned that several Ohio University students had been approached by their landlords with inaccurate or misleading information about the project. While going door-to-door, we kept track of our interactions with each household. In total, we knocked on forty-six doors and were able to speak with thirty-six of those. I'd like to share some of the statistics we discovered. Eighty-eight percent, or thirty-two out of the thirty-six households we spoke to, supported the project or felt unbothered by it. Point zero-five percent, or two, out of the thirty-six households we spoke to, did not support the project. I'll let this statistic speak for itself. I learned from neighbors of the Gathering Place that we spoke to that they had witnessed individuals sleeping under their cars or seeking shelters in corners and bushes outside their buildings in the winter because they had nowhere else to go. This is heartbreaking. The Hut project will help. A lot of people have asked for an alternative, but there's no time for that. Winter is coming fast. Today is, in fact, the first day of fall. There is no time for the perfect solution that will make everyone happy. It's just not feasible. When will it click that the Hut project is a solution? It's a small step in the right direction, and as a community, we should do everything possible to make this happen. To be honest, it's deeply frustrating to have to advocate for something that I so strongly believe to be so obvious and such a necessary solution. Nonetheless, I will continue to show up, speak out, and do whatever it takes to support the Conestoga Hut project, because the individuals we serve are not only deserving of dignity and safety, they're also an essential part of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I am David Hardiger, nineteen East Carpenter Street, and as I said before, I'm a hundred and ten percent in favor of the Conestoga Hut project. I believe Ginger and the Gathering Place is doing a good job trying to get something together to help the homeless in the community. I seriously believe this, and I stand a hundred and ten percent behind it.
Thank you.
Hello again, Kent Nikes, thirty-four, West Washington. I just want to point out that, echo something that our honorable mayor mentioned, you know, when an organization spends, you know, every organization has a purpose, a mission, you know? If you are a landscaping organization, your mission is to look at the environment, make it better, you know? The Gathering Place has been there for over almost fifty years, and they have been serving our community, people with mental health issues, substance use issues, for fifty years successfully. That's, that's a lot of time to understand what sorts of services people need, how to best help individuals. I am living proof of that, you know? And something that Megan mentioned, the phrase "peer-to-peer," you know, there's no substitute for lived experience when you are talking to somebody who has, you know, a recovery journey that they're on, or, you know, mental issues. And I want to remind everyone that I live twenty feet away from the proposed site, and everyone there is going to be on a wellness and treatment program. You know, I've heard members of the community say things like, well, it's only three tents on wheels, it's not really going to help anybody. Look what one person accomplished in a matter of months with just having shelter. And who are we to deny our fellows, even three of them, that opportunity? And also, again, it's getting cold outside, let's get this done.
Any other members of the community? Okay, members of the committee?
Well, I would just echo what the mayor said, and I don't know that I could put it any better than Ms. Benjamin did. Everything she said, you know, was key to what this will do, what it means, and the reasons that we should be doing it. And I really appreciate the door-to-door interviews and contacting of the people that live near it and correcting the misinformation they've been given. And I see no reason not to send this forward.
Yes, Zoe.
Well, as I have said many times before, having been a social work professor at Ohio University, and having social work students volunteer and work there, and my own kids volunteer and work there, I'm a big fan of Ginger and the Gathering Place and the people that work there. And also, having been with my students and having them experience what it was like to volunteer there and how much they learned, and that there was never, ever, in the many years that I was placing people there, we never had a safety issue, ever. And we had, I know in one case, I had a student who was still pretty early in her experience, she was there by herself for a short time with the members, and she did a great job and had a wonderful experience, and we just never had an issue. So I really take exception to those landlords, and I know one of them at least, who made a strong statement against this, and I'm certain that he talked to his, the students who lived in his rental against it. But I think it's really important for the community to know that this is just such a jewel in our, in our community that's so important, and I think that this is a great step forward for, you know, those people who can be served in this way. And I think the Conestoga Huts are kind of attractive, so I don't see it as a big deal.
I come back to the law director's opinion, and some of the things she says in here are very potentially troubling. An ordinance conferring a special right upon one, five, and seven North Congress would constitute spot zoning. Spot zoning is zoning that singles out one lot or a small area for a treatment that is different from the treatment given to surrounding land that is similar in character. Second thing she talks about, an amendment to the zoning code affecting these three lots does not bring these lots into accord with surrounding land. In fact, property owners adjacent to one, five, and seven North Congress Street would not have the same rights and privileges. And I would agree with the mayor, I doubt if somebody's going to put another, want to put another one up there in that area. Enacting an ordinance for spot zoning for one, five, and seven North Congress would set precedent. The concern of setting precedent is not this specific request, but the next request that may come before council. If council grants this request and not a subsequent request, the city may face legal action for differing treatment. And here's the part that gets sticky. In addition, if both ordinances were to pass, the one we're talking about now and the one that's coming up, if both ordinances were to pass, there would be inconsistencies between the ordinances, such as the timeframe for review, two years for one, five, and seven North Congress versus one for R-three and B-three zones, and how uses are granted by city code for one, five, and seven North Congress versus through the BZA for R-three and B-three. Other property owners in the R-three zone would not have the same rights as those granted to one, five, and seven North Congress Street. This also could result in legal action against the city. I guess what I'm getting at is, I think it might make sense to try to bring the two ordinances in line with one another. If in an R-three and a B-three zone, we're going to require the Service Safety Director to approve it first and then go to the BZA, and it be reviewed every year, perhaps we should do, have the same three conditions on this one. By doing that, we get rid of all the possible legal problems that could come up. But as long as we have two distinct sets of things for two similar zones, R-three, R-three, that causes a problem in my mind, a legal problem, and I think that's what the law director is saying here. So I guess I'm going to look over to President Crowell for procedure here, because in a sense, the point I'm making involves both bullet point three and bullet point four on our recommendations here. Or not recommendations, on our agenda items, I'm sorry, on our agenda items, not recommendations.
So your question is, is how to treat the following agenda item?
Well, no, more so, knowing what's in the following agenda item, do we change it to match the one we're talking about now? Or would it be better to change the one we're talking about now to match the one that's coming up?
I think that's actually a topic for your committee to discuss.
Now, that's, and that is the title here, a legal opinion, so I'm curious as to what other people on the committee think.
I was going to bring this up with the second one, so I'm, I agree with you, I think that that's a smart move. So I think they should be in line. If we're going to have the two, I think they should be in line, that makes sense. It could prevent problems down the road.
Member Thomas?
I wouldn't have a problem with keeping them in line, but I would like to keep them as separate ordinances.
Yes.
So that the fate of the Gathering Place is not tied to a citywide ordinance being changed or rezoning. And while I appreciate and understand the legal opinion, you know, a lot of what that referred to in the nineteen eighty-seven case, which was quite a while ago, is the only one they could reference, was mostly on zoning things like bulk controls, heights, things that we already address in other city codes, so I think this is really very different and separate accessory use. But I would be fine with adjusting the other one, and then if that one for citywide takes longer, it's not a concern, we can get to that, but then getting this one moving.
I agree completely with you. Yep. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
So when you say adjusting the other one, Doug?
To be, if we want to look at the citywide one, if we were to look at the rezoning on that and making it a biennial to match, you know, what is being, you know, given to the Gathering Place, seeing how, I'll both go through the Service Safety Director. The BZA takes longer, and I think in something we're looking at citywide that may not be as attached to a well-established facility, maybe that's something that, you know, we don't want to take away, but I don't know that we need to put that onto the Gathering Place ordinance.
See, I would like the one-year thing. This is, you know, this is brand-new.
Okay.
It's a bit of a trial, but I would like to see one year.
So you, we would adjust this current ordinance to be one annual review?
Mm-hmm.
I'd be okay with that.
Now, here's the thing. Walker, correct me if I'm wrong. This is a recommenda, these are recommendations coming from the Planning Commission. This body can pass those with a simple majority. If we amend what the Planning Commission sends us, it takes six votes.
Okay.
Mayor Patterson, you had your hand up.
I did, I think there's some nuance here that council should be aware of, that the thought process behind the annual renewal versus the two-year renewal was for the B-three, R-three, B-three zones, it's not inconceivable for someone to have, let's say, in an R-three, a parcel with multi-unit, and then an empty vacant lot next door that is owned by the same person. And while that owner may, their ownership of the two parcels really can change ownership to where someone could come along and go, I'm not allowing for the restrooms to be used in this part of the property for the restroom facility for those who are in tents or Conestoga Huts. Whereas with the one at the Gathering Place, we already know that there's restroom facilities there, not only the restroom facilities there, which is what warrants a longer timeframe of renewal, it's that the services, we know that the services are going to be there, provided for those who are using the Conestoga Huts, where that would be, could be a potential issue for the R-three, B-three legislation, where I think it should be reviewed with a higher level of frequency than, say, every other year. So I'm just throwing that out there for council to think about and consider, is that these are two different, it's serving the same function, but two different pieces of legislation, obviously, and one's an R-three, B-three, and the other one is being specific to the Gathering Place that is already for fifty years providing service to those. And again, having the restroom facility right there that the individuals can go, we know that that's, I'm pretty confident that that's never going to change in the future. I'm seeing some head shakes now. I also want to commend you, you did a brilliant job. I apologize, council, but I'm going to take a moment. If I had a position open in the city after you finish your internship, in your area, I don't. You're, the way you presented tonight in front of this body and in front of me, it chokes me up. You, I'm sorry, I just have to go there.
Thank you, that was a lot.
Go ahead.
I absolutely concur on all those points, definitely an impressive effort. I, something that I haven't quite tracked or followed for the second piece of legislation, I was curious what the driving logic was behind that, how that came to be. I mean, we have a pretty clear understanding of the Gathering Place's project. The second one, I don't quite understand where that one originated and what the, where that is going, I guess. So I'm curious if anybody can provide context on what the, what the point was there, why that came to be different, yeah?
I can, if I may.
Yeah.
Chair Swank, it was just to provide a multitude of options, really, at the end of the day. You know, we recognize fully that there are a larger number of unhoused people nationally. We certainly know that there's a large number of unhoused individuals in Athens County and in Athens. And so it was to give council the opportunity to look at other vehicles that can be explored. Where council wants on this, it's up to you, it's not up to me, but it was to provide, you know, various options for this body to consider when it comes to providing shelter for those who are unhoused.
So when you were talking, Mr. Brandon, when you're talking about facilities, what were you talking about, facilities, restroom facilities and?
I am, I am referring to restroom facilities.
Because what we're talking about here is a public outhouse. Because what we're talking about here is a public outhouse in the parking lot. That's the plan.
We have several restrooms. Oh, okay.
Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, Ginger Schmollenberg, Director of Gathering Places. I live in Lakes County, I work in Athens County. We have, literally between our two facilities, we have five restrooms. A plan, yes, in place unless, we're told no, which no one's addressed this, is in the, at night, we would have a porta potty that would be on-site, hidden in the corner, and it would be serviced a couple of times a week. And so, and that would just be for the overnight. But during the day, we have that. So somehow, I mean, that's not even mentioned in this, but somehow if that were denied, we have restrooms.
So all along this has been a public outhouse in the parking lot, correct?
I did not write either of these.
No, 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 no. What your plan is to put a portage on in the parking lot and wash basin like you might see the tailgate, correct?
That was part of, yes, that was part of something that we might do for overnight, yes.
So anyway, back to the law director's opinion. If we're going to, we have two different ordinances here. I hate to conflate the two, but in one, in an R3 zone, these standards, and in the other, an R3 zone, these other standards, that's a legal, potential legal problem, according to what the law director says. Yeah, member Thomas?
Well, in the second ordinance, it's in an R3 and B3, so that would be a major difference between the two.
No, they're both R3s.
Well, they both include R3s.
Yeah, but there is no such.
I'm speaking and you can wait.
Okay.
In the second one, it includes B3s also in that ordinance. So it does make this sort, that ordinance different from the one we're speaking about now.
While the ordinance may be different, in both, an R3 zone is specific. There is no such thing as an R3, B3 zone.
No, I'm saying and.
Yes, right.
R3 and B3.
So you have an R3 in 05, and you have an R3 in 04.
Yes.
And they're being treated differently, and that's what the law director has clearly stated, is spot zoning and could potentially create legal problems. And according to the law director's opinion, the research shows, as far back as they could go, that we've never done spot zoning. And that's not a Pandora's box that I really want to open, having nothing to do with the gathering place and what's being proposed here, but the concept of spot zoning is not a path I want to go down.
Well, I'd argue this is spot zoning with a, a specific purpose for a specific mission, and that it addresses a community need that we are seeing increasing every, I wouldn't even say every year, but every so many months. It's a very different setting, it's a very different situation, and in 40 years, it hasn't become an issue or come up, but that doesn't mean it can never come up. I think it's worth addressing at full council and seeing where everyone else stands on it.
Says spot zoning is zoning that singles out one lot or a small area for treatment that is different from the treatment given to surrounding land that is similar in character. We had a similar situation involving out on Pomeroy Road where we were going to spot zone that spot for that development. Planning Commission said, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to rezone that whole area, and that was the recommendation. Even the planning commission said it. Andy Stone has said, we don't do spot zoning. It's in the video.
I.
If we're not going to listen to the law director's opinion, why do we even have one?
It's an opinion.
It's a legal opinion. I don't see another attorney up here.
It doesn't mean it stands for anything. I would also say, I spoke to Director Stone, and he had no issue with this, and this was his idea, and it came from him. Pomeroy Road was a different situation, and it was discussed whether that could be zoned specifically to be rezoned only for use for affordable housing, and it decided not to go forward with that. I mean, you would have to take up that difference in opinion with Director Stone, but I would all, I mean, what they're citing is from 1987. A lot of things in the world have changed in the last 40 years. This should be one of them.
So would you be comfortable with making the requirements the same in the two ordinances? One year? And the same process for approval?
I think the BZA on the garden, on the gathering place will take too long for the immediate need.
I would be all in favor of removing the BZA because I'm not real comfortable with an unelected body making that kind of decision. This is a little different than a variance. I, I would, you know, if you want to go this route, I would be comfortable with this coming before council. One year for both, and the council makes that decision with a vote of the majority.
So, question about that. If I heard this correctly, if we do amend this at all, then it's going to be more complicated. It has to go back to whomever.
No, doesn't have to go back to anybody. Stays here.
It has to be passed by six votes if we amend it.
Okay, so that's, so it, it could be fine. Honestly, I would like to see this one just stay as it is, get it done, pass it, whatever, and then mess around with the second one and give it some more thought. I, I have some concerns about the second one because there's no condition of having some oversight or services or anything related to that. And I don't want them in places where they're not going to get services. So I, I have some concerns about that. We know that that's happening with the first one. We don't know that. So I just want to get the first one passed, and then we can massage the second one, I think, a little bit more.
I have a question for the mayor. I know we're in the process, or maybe we passed it, I don't know, but you can advise on this, Clerk Walker. I know we're in the process of potentially leasing out the old fire station. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I will ask this question. Any thoughts of maybe using that facility until the Sunset Motel project is done next year, which moves folks who don't have a place to stay indoors, under a roof with heat and water, and a shower, and a toilet?
Well, we already have two interested parties in the fire station headquarters. Of course, they're going to have to bid, and it's going to go to the highest leaser, leasing, as it goes through that process. You know, look, I said this on the front end, so I'll repeat myself. Any way you look at this, and I might even defer to Ginger at the gathering place because she really is the one who was the lead on operating the fire station headquarters last year during a cold spell. But my point being is that, and some, some of you may not like hearing this, but it's the truth, is that there, there are more unhoused people in Athens and Athens County than there is emergency shelter for people. There are people living in cars, in parking lots. There are people at park and rides who are living in their cars for lack of having suitable shelter, access to a shower, access to a restroom. And so, you know, to your point, Councilmember Swank, I'm not going to tie this legislation to the fire station headquarters to, to void this conversation about these Conestoga huts at the gathering place. We can have a conversation about this happening in parallel. If we don't have someone leasing that space as things get colder in January and February, I'm more than happy to, but not at the sake of holding anything up with this piece of legislation because the need is there. The need, people, is there. I'm not, I'm sorry, council, council members, I'm talking to everybody, and I think we all recognize this. It's a fallacy to sit there and think that we are attracting people into the city of Athens because we have emergency shelter. I'm personally getting really tired of hearing that because that is not fact. The fact of the matter is, we have services here, we have amenities here, we are the county seat. Again, I know that, that, you know, people don't want to hear that either, but let's be real. And I think we have to face reality, and that is that it's a national crisis when it comes to people who are living one paycheck away from having to leave their, the domicile that they currently have, whether that's a rental unit or a house, you know, and finding themselves having to use the last shelter they have, which could be a car or maybe a tent, to go and live somewhere. And so I appreciate where, what you're thinking, Councilmember Swank, I really do. But I'm, I'm going to say, please do not tie this to what we could use if we need to, if it isn't, isn't inhabited by a company for the fire station headquarters moving forward in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from members of the committee? Okay. Item number four. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say that.
I didn't, I didn't see your hand.
I think, yeah, I was just going to say that Solvee speaks my mind on process.
All right. Item number four. This is a recommendation from the City Planning Commission, amend ACC 23.04.03 to allow temporary shelters as a conditionally permitted use in R3 and B3 zones. Mayor Patterson?
I, council, I don't really have anything for that. We've really kind of discussed them both in parallel, fortunate or unfortunate, but I think council knows where I stand.
Members of the committee. Members of the committee. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
James Skolski, 21 Pleasant View Drive. And I'd like to agree with what you had to say about this situation where the gathering place does have things in place to make sure people are in a program and getting the help and services they need. And if, if we were to do this for R3 and B3, then, you know, if I owned one of those properties, I could just put up a lot of little tents and have, you know, daytime rentals. And, you know, we, we already have a lot of things with, you know, those kind of short-term rentals in place that are already here, so I'm not really sure how you would, you know, delineate or, you know, differentiate those issues, you know? Because if there's no program to manage those things, what could really happen? And restrooms and all those things are a big issue, you know, in our community if that were to be the case. It would be, could be a little more of a free-for-all, so to speak. So that's my opinion on that situation as well. So I think that needs to be, you know, looked into more, more adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the community.
Well, I agree with what that gentleman was talking about, and especially with what member Spaldness was saying. I would like to see.
Just for the record, name and address, please, Ms. Claude Felter.
I'm sorry.
I don't think everybody knew.
My name is Beth Claude Felter, and I live on South Shannon Avenue.
Appreciate it.
I would like to see some language in this proposal specifying that there should be some access to services and support so that there isn't a free-for-all, as that man was saying. I think that is a really fair point, and it would be wise of us as a community to think about a citywide proposal very carefully. I don't, the, the proposal for the gathering place, in my mind, we need to handle really quickly because winter is coming. But this citywide proposal is more of a longer-term, more ambitious kind of concept, and I, I would like to see us consider it very carefully as we proceed, and I don't see the same kind of urgency to getting that one through quickly.
Thank you. Other members of the community.
Good evening. I'm Autumn Brown, and I live at 5316 New Floodwood in Nelsonville, Ohio. Work in Athens at the County Board of DD, and I sit on the Co曲 create housing security team. And so I've been a part of helping write the plan for the Conestoga huts that you were familiar with. I've also been a part of the team as we've looked at resources to help with the housing crisis that's been happening, and it continues to grow in Athens County and here in the city. And speaking on this R3, B3 piece, piece that you're looking at, in our experience with the Co曲 create team, we have been beating the bushes trying to find resources to help. I helped operate the emergency warming center at the firehouse last year. And looking at opportunities of other organizations and groups that are interested in doing anything similar to those Conestoga huts, nothing has surfaced. So I don't feel like this legislation is urgent and you have time, whereas I feel like that first piece is very urgent as the weather is cooling off and there are no options. Speaking on behalf of the Co曲 create team, we also do not have a plan for that emergency warming center. There is no agreement with the city, no agreement with the county. Last year, that came together at the last minute in that cold weather crisis where the gathering place kindly stepped up. The Athens Foundation worked really hard to help fund that. And so what we found about halfway through that is we did not have enough volunteers to fulfill the warming center, and we ended up having to have the gathering place support the rest of that season with paid peer recovery staff. And so as we look at the winter coming, we are trying to figure out what we will do within an emergency warming situation, waiting on that Columbus Road shelter to be able to serve. But right now, there aren't a lot of options. But speaking on this R3, B3 zoning, there aren't, there's no one that we know of, it's like waiting to do this. As Beth had shared, I think it, it does maybe make some sense for you to take some time to think about, how do you make sure that people that set those up are doing it in a very responsible way, that have a plan, very similar to how the gathering place has been working through that. And I'm committed to helping make that happen, but the same thing with this R3, B3, the housing security team is willing to also help solidify that language if that's something that you would like. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the community? Members of the committee? Member Thomas?
I would echo most of what we've heard, if we would take more time with this or fully vetted a little more. I do think it's worth pointing out in the language, I had an email that I responded to someone with this, that it's not really a free-for-all plan, that it would have prior approval of the service safety director before it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals on the issue, and then it would be reapproved every year. And then the same, it could be canceled at any time for, you know, issues of safety or sanitation. Just to be clear that it wasn't just a, any house, any, anything. But I do think it's really fair, and I know Ginger pointed that out a couple meetings ago, that being thoughtful as to where this allowed, who's it tied to, does it need to be, you know, from a sponsor organization that has the ability to provide services near it, are all things that we should look at and consider. And so taking more time with this one would make sense.
Yeah, I just want to echo that and to, I haven't heard Ginger talk about this one. I thought she might. But I think that we should just set this one aside for a little bit and really think it through, because I, I really think it needs to have some, as, thank you for clarifying, it's not a free-for-all. That's true. So don't worry about that. But nonetheless, I think it needs to be a little bit more than that. And the service connections and how that's done and what's acceptable, I think, needs to be more clarified. So, thank you.
I would agree with both of your statements. Unfortunately, if you watched the planning commission meeting on this at the direction of the city planner, it was suggested not to put that stuff in and to allow the BZA to make that decision. Although, as I said in the beginning, I'd agree with both of you. The clearer the conditions, the better, but that is not what came from the planning commission, which would require us to amend their recommendation with a six to one vote, six, six votes or better to pass it.
Yeah, I, I did catch that. However, I think that this kind of, this kind of effort does require a social worker's eye, and our planner is not that. So I think that it's important that we take into consideration those people who would be serving these folks and really get them in on the final language for this. So I hope you don't disagree with me back there, Ginger.
No.
Okay, all right.
I don't write either of them.
Well, again, that's why it's, it's helpful to have people who are experienced at this get a little bit of that. I understand the planner's concern about over, making it too specific, but I think in this case, it needs to have that lens in here that's not there.
So one of the things that came out in the planning commission meeting was comparison of this to the short-term rentals and the, the statement that council, prior to many of us, pointed on that and didn't put any. us, punted on that and didn't put any guardrails on that, leaving it up to the BZA. So procedural question. This was, Clerk Walker, this was recommended us from the Planning Commission. If we don't complete this by December 31st, does that recommendation go away?
It does.
It does. So that said, we have exactly six more business meetings between now and the end of the year. I'm talking about the second one here. I'm not talking about the third one, but the second one here. As a member of the Planning Development Committee, and I know you just worked real hard on two other things. Solvee, would you be interested in possibly coming up with some, if not draft language conditions for logical approval of these in a B3/R3 zone?
Yes, I think that would be a good thing, and I think some nodding, I can't see over the podium real well, but I think there's some nodding, and I'm also part of the Co曲 create project. So I think amongst those folks and the people in the room, we can come up with language fairly quickly.
So our next committee meeting, because this would need to come for a committee, is the 14th of August.
Right.
August, October. Yeah, I got some rain today, I don't know what month it is. The 14th, it's a Tuesday, the 14th of October. Three weeks, is that a?
I think so. I see nodding, so I'm good.
Okay, it's on tape.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this second bullet point about rezoning, or not rezoning, zoning changes?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'd have to complete it by the end of the year or have a first reading and carry over? Can't carry over? Okay. Just wanted to clarify for myself. All right.
All right. Bullet point number five. One, two, three, four, five. Vacant property registration. This is an idea that Assistant Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky has put an inordinate amount of time in, and Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, with ultimately, I see two goals here in no particular order. One, maximizing the use of housing structures in the city. And secondly, in some cases, cleaning up the city a little bit. So with that, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Gee, thank you. You know this well, Councilmember Swank, because I know that you've engaged a lot with our Deputy Service Safety Director. Again, the intent behind this piece of legislation would be to bring back otherwise sheltered rental units to where someone has a permit, they've had a permit, but they're opting for a sundry of reasons because maybe they view it as adding value to their property because they can rent out a structure, rent out a home or whatever, but opting not to, which, again, takes away from those who are looking for suitable housing in the city of Athens. It also includes, it also includes commercial property that is sitting fallow for long periods of time and not being used when, again, we know that there is a need, at least from an economic development standpoint, to have buildings that are just sitting fallow for a sundry of reasons and having them back being productive commercial units here in the city of Athens. So it's, this is not uncommon. As a matter of fact, it's the other way around. It's uncommon that we have a rental permit structure in the city of Athens for a city our size, and you look around at other cities and they all have something similar to this. We do not at this point in time. We can't compel someone to, you know, because you have a rental, just because you have a rental permit doesn't mean you sit on that rental permit and don't have it occupied. This is a tool that we can use to get those units occupied. I've got a list of cities and villages from throughout the state of Ohio. A lot of them are direct comparables to the city of Athens that have something very similar to this. So there will be as well a fee associated with, whether it's residential or commercial registration for things, to where if someone, after a series of years, just keeps denying and not wanting to rent it out, in the code office, this would fall directly in the code office, one of the many, many things they already manage. This would also be under the code office, to where it has an escalation in the fees associated with holding on to that rental permit but not renting it out to somebody because of the time it takes for us to administer said process, to do the research, to find out, how long has it been unoccupied? Is it still unoccupied? This, again, goes on the commercial side as well as the residential side.
Thank you. Members of the community. Members of Council or of the committee.
Sorry.
Yes, no, no. You beat her by that much.
Is this a land bank-style solution where the city would end up holding it, or is it more of a, just a registration?
Just a registration. No, land bank, which, full disclosure, I sit on the land bank board for, it's going to vary the process, where you've got a tax delinquent, significantly taxed delinquent property. In a lot of cases, there are abandoned homes, which is leading to obviously tax delinquency, and it then reverts to the land bank, and there's a process they have to go through to scrub the title and make it to where it either can be rehabable or in some cases have to be completely different, so it's a completely different process for all the type of, is a usable, occupiable rental units in the state of Athens for whatever reason is remaining to be unoccupied and some of them have been for years.
Solvee.
Yeah, so I was being on the Affordable Housing Commission. The Service Safety Director, Andrew Chicky, sent us an original draft of this, which we were all very pleased about for a variety of different reasons. We need more housing. And also, certainly being the representative for the West Side, I have a lot of people who are concerned about empty, long abandoned homes that are deteriorating rapidly and have for, in some cases, decades. And also buildings. I'm going to bring up Frank's bait shop as an example of one that has been, we think, I'm not sure if it's actually empty or not. In any case, a lot of homes that have not been occupied for a long time, and, you know, there's squirrels running through there and all kinds of stuff, and they could be actual housing. So we're concerned about making sure that those are taken care of. And I think that Deputy Director Chicky did a great job of putting this together and thinking it through and looking at many examples of other cities that have had this for a long time. So I think this is a long overdue and can really help out neighborhoods throughout the community and add more housing, which is a great thing. It could be that they could either sell it, obviously, or they could rent it. If it's in really bad shape, they may need to renovate it, and maybe there's some systems that could be put into place to help people with that process, which there's some discussion about. In any case, and also, there's exceptions. For example, you know, if you are a professor and you're going out of town for, you're leaving on a sabbatical for six months, we're going to allow you to have some time. So there's, I think it's really well thought through, and I support this 100%. So, oh, I did have one question, though. Let's see. One item was under exemptions. It says, and I, referring to what I just talked about, residents on an extended vacation or in an alternative temporary living arrangement with the intention of reoccupying the property is an exemption. But it doesn't give a timeframe here, and I think that might be helpful. Is that six months, that's, you know, a year? Yeah.
We can certainly work through that in a little detail.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's mine.
I think a sabbatical is a great example.
Yeah.
Where someone is on sabbatical from Ohio University for a year, or like myself, being called back onto active duty. I'm retired, but when I was in the military, in the Air Force, to be called back onto active duty and having to serve overseas for a year, again, I'd be communicating with my landlord, saying, hey, I'm going to be gone for a year, you know?
Right.
And it's the landlord knowing and acknowledging that, that is helpful, this process too, to where the landlord can say, yep, my tenant is still here, they have continued, you know, to lease this property if their intent is to come back to that property when they return from military service or sabbatical.
Yeah, this is in no way intended to be some kind of land grab at all. It's just, want to be really clear about that. It's just, if someplace is abandoned, well, if you want to keep it that way, it is a cost to the city, so we want you to pay some dollars to make that continue or fix it up and rent it.
I had a couple, oh, sorry.
I just had a question on the renewed annually until reoccupied or demolished. Is there any minimum length of time someone has to be in it to be considered reoccupied? Like more than 30 days or someone just kind of doing a month lease?
I think you have to show that you've signed, that there's a lease signed or a contract with a Realtor, one of those two.
Yeah.
So I think it's fairly specific what constitutes.
Reoccupation. Sounds good.
I asked Ms. Chicky a couple of questions today. I said, if a property, because I'm going to give some further explanation as to what this does and how it's going to work. If a property owner doesn't register their property and we don't know that the house is vacant, how does that get addressed? And secondly, if someone lives in an auxiliary structure on the property, say above a garage, and the house has been vacated and is clearly falling into disrepair, what happens in that case? So here's what he wrote, and it's not long, just indulge me, please. If a property owner doesn't register their property, they are doing so at their risk of one and a half of the current annual fee or $1,000 plus the registration fee. Resident complaint as well as other code violations. For example, the code office sees a property with overgrown grass and weeds. When they investigate the grass and weed violation, they may notice it appears that the building on the property is vacant or abandoned. They would then do an investigation, make contact with the property owner, and make a determination if the property should, in addition to a grass and weed violation, also be placed on the vacant property registry. Another method is the list of addresses that the utility billing office has on file that are currently disconnected. Every occupied residence or business is required to have water, sanitary, trash service. The utilities office will supply the code office with the disconnected list to then initiate an investigation on. Finally, it could be complaint-driven by a neighbor. In the scenario where someone lives in an auxiliary structure on the property and the main house is vacant and in disrepair, it would have to meet the evidence of vacancy definition as well as the definition of vacant building. If it meets these definitions, it would be considered vacant and need to be registered. Just because someone is living somewhere on the property doesn't necessarily mean that all structures are habitable or not vacant. So it sounds to me like building some real good identification measures to identify properties that need to be addressed and declared vacant. And as Solvee said, this is not a land grab, this is not a violation of property rights. This is, hopefully, to bring some properties up to speed and also to get properties occupied because, as we talked about in the other two things, we need housing. So that, any other comments on this one?
Let's move it forward.
Okay. We need to back up real quick to bullet point number four, just for a second. We need to do a public hearing on this, do we not?
We do.
So the first business meeting, 30 days out, would be the first Monday in November for a hearing. Can we do that? I mean, can you, that's November 3rd, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be the first business meeting, first or third, that's 30 days out. If we do that, and we have to go through three readings, we still have one, two, three more business meetings after that.
Three in December.
Now we have one in, one in November, and then two, three in December. Yeah.
We typically meet three times.
We'll get everything done this time, so Sam can ride off on his horse into the sunset. Okay, so can you get a public hearing for that first Monday in November? All right, good deal. Number six, NOPEC, Do Not Knock Program. It's interesting, just this week, I saw on the West Side Facebook page that some utility company is out again knocking on doors, either selling gas or electric. Before I turn it over to the mayor, I need to say this. In no way, shape, or form is this an attempt to thwart legitimate business practices. I wouldn't, don't want to embarrass anybody, but if each of you were to hold up your utility bill right now, I'm guessing 50% of you are overpaying, and 10% of the remaining 50% really can't tell me the difference between a supplier and a generator. It's a confusing thing. And what often happens when these folks come to your door, they do have a legitimate purpose is to sell a product. And for a month, three months, six months, even 12 months, it may be a very, very good deal. But then what happens? Well, if I hadn't paid attention to mine, my gas bill went from 52 cents per CCF to 93 cents per CCF. On the gas side, that's not real bad. If your electricity would go up 40%, because your electricity bill is generally more than your gas bill, you could be paying $300 or $400 in electricity a month and not even know it. So what the NOPEC, No Knock Program is, is a program where we can, if approved by this council, work through NOPEC, who is our gas aggregation company, to have a registry program where folks can opt in to it, get your name on the list, so that people who have not registered with the city or people who have registered with the city will not knock on your door. It will be a violation of city code. This program, NOPEC has in about 30 different communities. It works very, very well and basically cleans up the whole sales process of utility solicitation. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, Councilmember Swank. I do have a question for you, Councilmember Swank, really quick, and then, yeah, I do have several comments about this. Correct me if I'm wrong, this would not just be for entities that want to sell you electricity or gas. This could be for any solicitor in the city of Athens, correct?
Yes.
But would include those?
Anyone who's subject to registration.
Okay.
Someone's still knocking on your door for Girl Scout cookies, we're going to allow that.
Yes. Okay. This is great, and I'm going to share a couple of things with all of you. One of the things, and this is incumbent upon us, who are your elected servants in the city of Athens, when we are knocking and going door-to-door during campaign season, if someone has a no soliciting sign on their door, we cannot knock on that person's door. And.
That's not true. Not true.
Are you 100% sure that that's not true?
You're not selling anything, it's free speech.
You're asking for someone's vote.
Not selling anything. Can't sell votes.
Well, okay. That can be argued at a later date. I respect that do not solicit and do not knock on that person's door because they are purposely saying they don't want people that they haven't invited over to their residence to sit there and knock on the door. The mayor's office, I sign off on all peddler, solicitor, and vendor permits in the city of Athens, and I get lots of them. It's for solar installation, it's for electricity, it's for, we're going to put new gutters on your house or whatever. And I loathe doing that because I know that there's a lot of people who are not interested in that. So my point being this, is that this would give people the ability to register on a No Knock Program, and by registering on that No Knock Program, it's the code office that will keep that list to where someone who wants a vendor, peddler, or solicitor's permit, they typically start with the code office. The code office has a form that comes to me, but along with that form, if I prove and say, yes, we'll allow you to do so, and this program would make it easier for me to allow people to sign off on those things, because then that list of those who want to be on the No Knock Program or No Solicitors Program, that is distributed to that vendor, and that vendor knows, these are the addresses that I can't go and knock on someone's door, which is truly doing a service for those who don't want to have someone that they don't know come knock on their door selling whatever it is they're selling. You know, again, I'll cede my time and my thoughts and processes about campaigning door-to-door when I see a no solicitor sign, but anyway. There you have it.
No, okay. Members of the community.
Mary Abel Strathmore Boulevard.
Mary Abel Strathmore Boulevard. I just want to ask a question. I know all vendors are supposed to register with the city of Athens, but sometimes we have people that come to our door that are selling different things. And one of them, I asked if they were registered with the city, and they weren't, and they said they didn't know they had to register with the city. So how do we get those kind of vendors to register? You know, there are always people coming after a store that want to fix your gutters or cut your trees or whatever the case may be. So I'm just trying to think of how do we prevent some of that as well.
Ms. Abel, that would be, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I'm sure that happens. And it's hard getting that information out there as a community. I mean, we can certainly post it on our website. There are vendors out there, I mean, so there's vendor solicitors and peddlers, and they're all categorized differently. Our vendors tend to be the people who are using the food vending spaces or art vending that we have in those designated areas, but it's the solicitors and the peddlers that we're talking about. I would encourage people to use the Athens, Ohio City Source app and say, hey, someone just came to my door and peddling something, and I'm not sure if they're registered. That way we can cross-reference whomever that is. It's hard for us to track someone who might come in in the morning and decide that they're going to hit FINA, or they're going to hit the south side, or they're going to hit some area in the city and peddling something, but in fact, they should have gone through the process in the city to get a peddler or solicitor's license, or permit, rather, not a license, but a permit.
And I guess we can remind them if we're aware that we need to tell them to check with the city.
If you know, yeah, I mean, you know, because you're typically right on top of things, but that's not the norm. I mean, to your point, that a lot of people don't know, that, you know, I don't know, okay, hello, whoever you are. Always, always feel comfortable asking that person who's coming to your door to sell you product X or service Y and say, are you registered with the city to sell door to door? And, you know, if I've signed off on it, then yes, but if they look at you like no, then you've got to go through the process.
On our website, there is a list of, and right now we have two.
Peddlers or solicitors?
Two people have, yeah, have registered. Can't tell you who it is, but there are two. Any other comments from the community? Members of the committee?
Well, I just have to say that coincidentally, just before I found out that this was going to be on the agenda, I got contacted by somebody on the West Side, asking us to do this. We need to do this. And so I checked, and I was told, yes, as a matter of fact, it's coming up. So got to get back to the person and say, we're on it. And I think a lot of people would feel much more comfortable if we could get this passed, so.
Full disclosure, too, from 2017 to 2024, the mayor was on the NOPEC board, and when you became the president of the National League of Cities, probably need to offload something, and I am now the representative for Southeast Ohio on the NOPEC board. Neither one of us got a penny of commission from this, number of people that we sign up, but it's a program that we were able to bring down here last month. Representative from NOPEC came down, explained it in a very short period of time. Clerk Walker and Law Director put together the ordinance for us. So that takes care of the NOPEC, No Knock Program. Number seven, Affordable Housing Commission. Ad hoc Subcommittee Proposed List of Appointments. Last business meeting, this body voted to establish such a committee, and we now have a list of appointees that is going to come before council for a vote at our next business meeting in October. And because I throw it to the mayor, well, Soli, I guess it makes any sense, we need to really start here.
Yeah, so I guess I need to say that as chair of the Affordable Housing Commission, we did discuss and vote on people to nominate for, as we agreed upon, the city would look it over and look at our list. And I do have to say that before this was even voted on, or, you know, we voted to pass this resolution, I had several people contact me and say, I really want to do this. So I was pretty excited that we got some really great, in my opinion, people who want to do this. And so I'm going to, I sent, everybody's got the list and, you know, information about them. We even sent out CV and a resume for two of them. So what the Affordable Housing Commission said was, the renter is a fourth-year student named Emory Mathie, and Emory, do I have to go through all this stuff? You forgot this. Okay, anyway, and has a longtime interest in renter stuff and has some research experience, has worked on these kinds of projects along with other community services. There's a researcher, Jennifer Collins, who CDU have, and she has done not rental stuff or housing stuff per se, but she has done community research projects. So she seems like she knows what she's doing. And then Bob Prebe is a very experienced property manager and has lots of great ideas. He's been here for over 20 years and knows a lot about the project. For our experienced renter advocate, we have Caitlin McDaniel, who is the senior staff attorney with Legal Aid, employed in the Athens office, and provides legal information, advice, and counsel to low-income Athenians, has a great deal of experience on rental issues, so couldn't have anybody more perfect I've gotten to know over the years. And then the committee decided that they also wanted me to be the member of the Affordable Housing Commission to serve on the subcommittee. So I can't obviously be here for you to debate me, but I hope that you will consider each one, and I guess I should leave the room, so. Yes, I should leave the room. Is that appropriate?
I don't believe tonight there's any debate of these individuals. I don't, Members Swank?
I'm just checking to see how you want to do this.
Yeah, committee, we would discuss it, yeah, so it'd probably be appropriate. We're not going to say anything bad about you.
All right, good.
What if we have questions at the?
First of all, first of all, let's just stay here for a second. Go to the mayor, comments?
Well, why don't we, I can answer questions about everybody until we get to me. Is that?
Well, yeah, you're fine, yeah. So we'll, members of the community. Members of the committee, do you have questions?
Yeah, last time we heard and agreed that we should have maybe somebody that isn't a student as the renter, but what I heard is there is already the list before that.
No, what happened was that, yes, they, people contacted me, and then when you said you'd like to have a renter renter rather than a student renter, I reached out and asked around about a renter, and we didn't get anybody. And the student renter was so good that we decided we'd go with it. But I do want to emphasize that just because we have a student renter, we are going to do surveys of regular renters, renters with disabilities, renters who have challenges, I mean, you know, a broad range of different kind of renters. We also interview renters. So we're not going to just look at this from a student perspective. This will be a legit, you know, academically rigorous kind of project where you do your interviews, and you do your focus groups, and you do your surveys. And we also have a professor, Dr. Shaw, who is interested in taking on some of that with her students as a class assignment, so they can help with the actual data analysis and collection. So we want to follow the model that we did with the pedestrian accessibility committee where we got over 700 surveys. So I think we can do better than that, to be honest. So we will definitely get all of the renter perspectives, well, not every single human, but, you know, a broad range of different kinds of renters, not just a student renter.
Yes, sir.
And then the other question that I'm still not quite clear on, because obviously you're not going to be here next year, and obviously you're, you know, the most qualified person to be on the thing, but then again, you won't be here next time. So how do we handle that? I mean, that's a pretty specific, and I don't think that was.
Well, there is, there is an opening on the Affordable Housing Commission that I could take in January, assuming that they vote me in on that. So even if that's not the case, I would still be on this subcommittee. Well, no, that's, if I get, if I get voted in, then I can be on this subcommittee.
I thought the intent was that the person would be a council member.
Well, there is a council, that's a separate role. So there's three additional people. One is selected by the mayor, and one is selected by the university, and a person has been tentatively assigned by the President Gonzalez. And then there's, of course, Sam chooses from the body here.
So, not being obtuse, I hope, but so then, Sam, the next council president would pick another person?
Yeah.
To the?
To the Affordable Housing Commission, yes.
A city council representative.
A city council representative, but that doesn't preclude me from being on the commission in a separate role and serve on the subcommittee.
And so the role that you're serving is not, I'm sorry, I thought there was a person on the, on the subcommittee that's supposed to be specifically a council member?
Yes, but that would be separate from where my role would be.
So would you be another person on the thing?
Yes.
So we'd have to make another seat?
No.
May I speak?
Just generally.
Clarification, Members Swank?
Yeah, Paul, please.
Oh, thank you. So I had some questions about this as well. Members, be honest, you said that everyone had these materials, and I think you mean the committee.
Yes.
Because I haven't seen these materials that you were just discussing.
Oh, I thought I did send it to you.
No, that's okay. So one of the issues of the city council president, whether it be myself or Member McCary in the next calendar year, we have the role to appoint one member of this subcommittee. From my standpoint, I wasn't sure what the Affordable Housing Commission was going to recommend in terms really of yourself, and so I couldn't make a determination of who I might appoint until I had found out what the Affordable Housing Commission was recommending. And so if they are recommending you, now I know that I can have conversations with other council members about perhaps being for the next couple of months, the appointed member from council.
Right.
But as Member Wood is pointing out, when the term ends in January, the new president of council would have to determine who would be the appropriate person from council to take that council seat.
Right, exactly.
Now, current member Spielness may be on that subcommittee as a recommended researcher, I think is the topic, or filling one of those categories.
Okay, so because there's an empty slot that I could be on and voted.
On the Affordable Housing Commission.
On the Affordable Housing Commission.
Right.
That's separate from somebody from council.
Right.
And I think my replacement might be interested in that, but we're talking about that.
But you could also be in that researcher role come January.
Well, except what they decided was they would like.
They've already filled that, or they've already recommended?
They would like five people rather than four, which I had thought we were going to do, but they wanted me to be in a separate role so that there would be five of us.
Okay. Some of this, Member Wood, if you're confused, it's okay. Is new to me now as well, but.
Well, it's a little bit of musical chairs.
As far as my role in appointing, or the president of council, I should say, appointing a member of this subcommittee, it's a little bit interesting timing in that the first person who I will recommend for appointment will be a short, very short term, and then it'll turn over to the new president come January.
Right.
It's a little bit, yeah.
It's not ideal, but I think it'll work out.
It'll make it work.
Yeah, I think it'll work out. So do you have any questions about any of these people? And I'll send you, Sam, all the details I thought I had, but.
I'm sure all of council for next week will receive that.
Yes.
Information.
Yes, and I did already send it, you all got it, right? I think so, yeah, because you sent it out to everybody. All right, but I'm thoroughly impressed with the people who stepped up.
Yeah, excuse me, any other questions? Yes.
I just comment, this does look like a nice mix of people from the area. I know a couple of people out of the four. Yeah, it's nice, we've got a student, we've got someone not associated with the university, someone who is associated with research in university. Tonight seems like a nice mix.
Yeah, and I inquired about the student, you know, we used to have freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, now we have first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth year, as to when this individual would graduate and will not graduate until 2027, after this committee has finished its duties.
Right.
Because I didn't think it'd be a good idea to start with one and have to find another one.
Right, no, this person's done a lot of cool stuff. She's, she's pretty sharp.
Okay. Any other comments by members of the committee? President Crowell, that concludes the planning and development marathon.
Thank you very much, Member Swank. We will now move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee. This is currently chaired by Member McCary in the absence of Member Reisner, and Member McCary is joined by Members Wood and Claude Felter. Thank you.
Thank you, President Crowell. Finance and Personnel just has two agenda items for this evening. The first is a routine then and now appropriation. As some may know, occasionally we have an expense that we've paid for before funds have been officially encumbered, and in this case, we're just talking about some mattresses for our firefighters. They are high-end mattresses, but nonetheless, we would typically use a then and now process to pay for these invoices properly, just a record-keeping matter. And I will ask the mayor if he has anything to add from the administration's perspective on this.
No, this is for the beds for the near fire station workers, which they have beds.
Mattresses.
Hence the then and now.
Yes, thank you.
They're not sleeping on the floor, I want to make that clear.
Absolutely. Anyone from the public have questions about this then and now appropriation? Members of the committee? Yes, Member Wood?
We need to do an emergency clause for it to get it through.
Yes.
Yes. So that would be introduced at our next regular session. Thank you, Member Wood. Any other questions from the committee on this matter? Wonderful, seeing none. I'll move us to our second agenda item for Finance and Personnel. That's the LAX Kershaw Green Water Agreement. For those who are unaware, we have, as part of our annexation agreement, the city of Athens bills Kershaw Green residents at the LAX water district rate, and then remits half of that revenue to LAX for 15 years. And in 2024, we were able to budget $20,000, which was sufficient. In 2025, we budgeted $25,000, and already, just in September, we've already exceeded that amount. So there's been a request from the administration to authorize $20,000 more to cover the remainder for 2025. First, I'll ask the mayor if he has anything to add on behalf of the administration.
I would just add that this is not atypical for what we do, when we know that we are bringing in what was LAX customers or LAX territory, which is what the Kershaw Green development is. And when we do this to make everyone whole, it carries with it the current LAX rate, which will carry forward, but we did, and then we end up paying LAX, redistributing back to LAX, half of what comes in from that rate, the upside is, is that in 15 years, which now we're at, what, year two, or into year two for these properties, that their rates will go down significantly, it will be cut in half, because they'll then receive what is the city rates at that time. But what we've noticed is there's been a lot more water consumption, and with the new lines in there, that we underestimated what the demand was going to be on that site, so we're just asking for there to be an increase in the appropriation for the, to distribute back to LAX for that use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and let me go ahead and clarify that this is not due to weather, it being hot. This is actually due to increased occupancy of the buildings that were not in use last year. So I will next go to the public for questions about this agenda item. So I will next go to the public for questions about this, this agenda item. And members of the committee, do you have any questions about our LAX agreement? Member Claude Felter?
I do. If the $25,000 made it all the way to September, which is not as good as making it all the way to December, but still that's two-thirds of the year. I'm curious why there is a request for another $20,000. That seems larger. Seems like maybe it would be more in the neighborhood of $8,000 or $9,000 that would get us through the end of the year at the current rate of consumption.
Yeah, well, and it was, there was more units that came online. The complex filled faster than we had modeled for this. So it's just, it's covering the additional water use that's going on in that facility in order to pay LAX what they're entitled to with that splitting. You know, we budgeted for X across the year to go to LAX and then we retained the other half of the money that's coming in. But there's greater demand on those services and the greater occupancy in now all phases of the Kershaw Green Taylor complex that is the four units there, the 192 units.
I can also add that I did check with Director Stone to confirm that this is a 15-year agreement, so we can't really change the terms of this. But it's also in our best financial interest in that this is the more lucrative way to go for our city. Any other additional questions from members of the committee? All right, seeing none, then I would say that Finance and Personnel is done for the evening, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will finish this evening with the committee of the whole. So I'll invite all councilmember, councilmember back to the dais. And we have one item on our agenda this evening for committee of the whole. And that is a cybersecurity policy. The auditor of the state of Ohio issued a bulletin to all public offices that I'll just go ahead and read the background to. Ohio Revised Code 9.64 enacted through House Bill 96 requires political subdivisions to set and adopt standards safeguarding against cybersecurity threats and ransomware attacks. This bulletin details the requirements of that code, which are effective September 30th, 2025. As a, as a municipality, we are required to have this in place by January 1st, 2026. So under the direction of our IT department and working with the city administration, the department has drafted a City of Athens cybersecurity policy, which all city council members should have. Anything to add, mayor, on this cybersecurity policy?
Just to reference a couple of the key points to this new policy. It would cover things, certain points such as firewall, antivirus, multi-factor authentication, staff training, which is important on the front end, and backups, and rapid authority notification. And then also recovery. So this is, has been well-vetted by the director of IT as well as the service safety director and the deputy service safety director. So again, it's, it's our pathway to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to make sure that we are adhering to cybersecurity prof, or cybersecurity processes that every community in the state of Ohio should be. Actually, every community in the nation should be.
I can all just add that the bulletin from the, from the state outlines what the cybersecurity policy should entail and our locally drafted policy aligns very well with that bulletin. Members of the public, anything to ask or add to on the cybersecurity policy? Questions or comments? Did you want to go back?
I, I do. I mean, this is just for, for the public. I mean, I think this is important. I mean, because what the policy that we're going to take on and then the processes that we're going to do, you know, I would contend, these are things that everybody should be doing these days. There is so much disinformation, misinformation and bad actors that are out there. And sometimes you're just a click away from opening yourself up to, to being held ransom with ransomware, malware, whatever. It's out there all over the place. So be really careful when you have emails that come to you and, and you know, hey, you need to re-up your whatever that you have on your cellphone or on your iPhone and, and you know, because that could be really opening you up. We are going through that constantly. Where we're, we actually, even in the city, part of this process is going to be to where we have, you know, on our end, you know, through the HR or through the IT department to where we, we put out things to see, you know, make sure people aren't just clicking on things that they shouldn't be clicking on. So we're testing as well as I think, you know, the public, just to throw out to you, be really careful as to what you're clicking on because what you can click on can end up either costing you a lot of money or open you up to a lot of headache with, with people that are out there as bad actors and wanting to disrupt your life.
Thank you. So once, one more chance for the public? Okay, we'll go to the committee. And let me just start by saying I apologize for those of you who are just seeing this today. I did receive it on Friday and I was out of town this weekend and didn't realize that I hadn't sent it on until today. So you all should have had it this afternoon. But if you haven't had a chance to review it, obviously, at our next meeting, we can go through any changes or any discussion. But right now, if you've had, had a chance, it's open to questions. Yes, Members Swank?
To the mayor's point, I got two of those today, identical. I don't know what they were fishing for, but hit the little button at the top. Which brings me to this point.
Members Swank, just tell us the button on the top to make sure people understand that that is part of being safe.
Right.
Sorry, not that you clicked on something you shouldn't have.
No, 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 no. I clicked on the good button.
Correct.
Yeah.
Reporting it to our IT department.
The good witch and the bad witch, yes, I clicked the good witch. As a board member of NOPEC, we are provided computers from NOPEC for NOPEC business. And you can imagine a major utility concern like that has, has, they're not infallible, but have layers and layers and layers. As council members, we're accessing our email from home. As I read through all that stuff, should we? I, I bet none of us have as secure a computer as these things right here or my NOPEC computer, no matter how diligent I am. And I'm not a techie, but are there any concerns or any thoughts as to should we be accessing our emails, city council emails, from a city-controlled and provided machine?
It's a good question, Members Swank, which I do not have the answer to.
Just speaking for myself, I've never accessed my email from anything other than this laptop.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm, I'm asking out of.
I think we would probably have heard from our IT department if there was some sort of security risk to accessing our email from a home computer. I think it's mostly about the training that we've all received through, know before, about what not to click on, what to look for, that that's how they attempt to get inside, right? I'm not sure if, you know, even on this computer, if I clicked on the wrong thing, I think I could still cause a security problem. So I think it's more about user behavior. Although I, I'm not an IT person, so I can go home and ask my wife. That's a great question. I think it's one we should probably ask.
And I asked this in the, yeah, and I asked this in the context of my brother-in-law, who is a retired cybersecurity person with the NSA. And I had no idea how high he was up in the organization until President Obama rolled out his cybersecurity initiative like in 2010 or 11. And my brother-in-law said, you got to watch this. So I tuned in. Everybody walks in, and walks the director of the NSA, and walks my brother-in-law, and walks President Obama. I said, oh, he is pretty high up. Now I know why they do all these things. He has said to me, there are programs that can be on your computer that can get into another, another thing, into the email. So I just throw that out there and just kind of like our folks will take a look at that and make sure that we're not endangering anybody, even being diligent like I was today, hitting the good button twice.
Other comments or questions, Member Claude Felter?
If there is a desire for us to have more secure access to our city council email from home, which seems reasonable to me, rather than mandating that we only access it from a city computer, which could be expensive, it seems to me. I mean, maybe our IT department, Scott, not to give you more work, sorry, but could consider for something like double factor authentication would make sense or something simpler like that that doesn't necessitate more infrastructure, more equipment being purchased, but just more, perhaps, you know, a bit more rigorous safety protocols from, to access city council email from home. Because at the moment, I don't think there are any. So some would be an improvement.
Thank you, Member Claude Felter. And my understanding of, of duo authentication is that that ensures that it is you and not somebody else accessing your city email. But it won't protect your computer from any sort of, it just keeps me from accessing your email or some, some other bad actor. But that's a, a point that we should also ask. Mr. Houston? Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you, President Crowell. I would share that under other circumstances, I would typically be acting as chair of city and safety services, which is where a lot of our IT and internet matters come to. And in this case, we are choosing to discuss this as committee of the whole largely because it really affects all the work that we do and all the work that our city employees do. But I'm curious about future mechanisms, particularly with an IT policy, imagining that there will be regular new types of threats and upgrades that will just, I think a lot of that will just be controlled by our IT director. But how often might this policy need to be updated? And would it be the thought that it would always be best for the council, the committee of the whole, to review this versus city and safety services?
Mayor, do you want to speak to that?
I will. You raise a great point. And what I would say is, you know, our IT director, as well as GoToIT, who is also who we use when it comes to all things IT-related for the City of Athens, is, as, as new and novel threats do manifest themselves, that it'll be something, you know, because right now, a lot of what I'm hearing up and down the dais, when it comes to your own personal commuter, computer and using it to access your city emails, we're talking about firewall, we're talking about antivirus or the big things. Multi-factor authentication, you're spot on. I mean, that just keeps you from, you know, Sam, President Crowell, from accessing my computer when you're acting mayor and I'm gone, you can't get into my computer, you can get into your own computer. But, but you raise a great point, that we will constantly monitor to see what's out there in the landscape to when there are varied threats that start to come at us that are unique to, to. And that's where I think Lucas is doing a fantastic job for the City of Athens. And GoToIT is doing a great job as well. So, so I think as new threats come, come, come about that will, I will make sure that, that our IT and GoToIT is, is at the forefront to make sure that when they are starting to become identified as a newer novel threat, that that gets added to our protocol for what we're doing to ward off. You know, you guys may have seen these in the past and it's kind of old school to where there's an email that, you know, hey, city council member X, this is urgent. Can you send me a Lowe's card, you know, a gift card or whatever? Don't ever respond to that. Don't ever send a Lowe's card to anybody, in particular to me, I don't want it. But, but they're becoming more and more sophisticated. And again, it, it just means that our IT has to be ahead of the power curve in recognizing and, and knowing what's going on from an NSA standpoint or from, from an FBI standpoint or from a CIA standpoint. Because so much of what we're getting, hopefully you guys recognize this, it's not coming from stateside. It's not, so many of our threats are coming from around the globe. There are stateside threats, but you know, so often they're coming from somewhere else. And I'm not talking about, hi, I'm the sultan of such and such a place and you are just a, I'm going to inherit to you or give to you $10 million if you click on this link, you know, don't do that either. Those days are gone. It's becoming more and more sophisticated.
Let me quickly, before we go to Member Wood, just answer your second question, which is, it's my opinion that this should live in the service safety, city safety services. However, I don't want to, precedent is usually to continue a singular issue within the same committee that it came up before. So would committee of the whole be more appropriate going forward for changes? Or would it be okay, once we get established?
Okay.
Right, great. I'm going to go to Mr. Wood, please.
Well, first off, I'm disappointed that I have to return your Christmas gift since you don't own my Lowe's gift card. But I got you.
Couldn't accept them anyway.
Fine. Yeah, I mean, they're all sort of, it's, it's jiggling the hand knob on, on different doors, what's going on, right? And people are going through. And there's different levels of that. And of course, obviously, the highest level are people we know. No one in the city has thought about that before or had to think about that before. But yeah, I think just the, the level of awareness is pretty surprising. And yeah, encrypt everything.
Member Claude Felter?
I guess I, if council deems it appropriate, I would like to suggest that we request that as Lucas and the ID, IT department of the City of Athens work to head off all the, you know, incoming threats, that maybe some protection be given to our personal computers at home since we are accessing city business and city documents from our home computers.
Never accessing city documents. Speaking for yourself.
Again.
I think I would support a update on recommendations from IT regarding personal use of our technology to access email.
Any other comments or questions on this policy? Okay, maybe, I mean, I will send some questions to Lucas about, that was brought up tonight. But we will see this policy at our next regular session of council.
Okay.
And that ends our city council for this evening at 9:02. Thank you very much.